That started, hopefully she'll join us soon.
Great.
Is there a motion to adjourn closed session?
I'll move.
Shall move by Mr. Ayala. Ms. Martinez, you want a second?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, vote by board members. Nancy, aye. Dina? Dina? Okay, Joe Martinez?
Aye.
Joe Ayala?
Aye.
Edgar Montes?
Aye.
Okay, so we are adjourned in closed session at 7:13 PM. All right, and open session is reconvened at 7:13 PM. And we're supposed to do the pledge of allegiance, so let's all stand, put hands over hearts, say pledge of allegiance. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, and Dr. Avila, do we have a report out of closed session?
Yes, we do. President O'Kelly, in closed session, the board took action to issue notices to the following certificated administrative employees that they shall be released from their administrative positions and reassigned pursuant to Education Code Section 44951 effective at the end of the 2019-20 school year, and directed the superintendent or designate to send out appropriate legal notices. Employee number 2580110. Principal on assignment, employee number 2179110. Principal on assignment, the roll call vote was unanimous.
Okay. Any other items?
No other items to report out of closed session, but just so that the board is aware, well, we are providing interpretation for this meeting as we have in other meetings. And our interpreter, Mr. Reyes, has asked that whenever we read out information or make comments, if we can be cognizant, do not read them too fast so that he can have the opportunity to interpret for his audience.
Okay. All right, moving on to adopting the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
Martinez.
Okay, is there a second?
Montes, second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye, aye for Nancy. Dina? Okay, Joe Martinez?
Aye.
Joe Ayala?
Aye.
And Edgar Montes?
Aye.
All right, presentations, we have none. Move on to comments. Public comments from the floor. At this time, any person wishing to speak on any item not on the agenda will be granted three minutes. Do we have any, Dr. Avila?
We have none, President O'Kelly.
Okay, the next one is public comments on agenda items. Any person wishing to speak on any item on the agenda will be granted three minutes. Do we have any of those, Dr. Avila?
We have none, President O'Kelly.
Okay. Comments from Association Executive Board Members, Rialto Education Association, REA. Do we have any comments?
Yes, we do. We have from Lisa Lindberg, REA president. And it reads, "Thank you for the opportunity to comment this evening. I hope you are all doing well and staying safe. I want to thank the educators of Rialto Unified for their hard work and continued dedication, and recognize them during this week of the teacher. We have amazing people. I also want to take the opportunity to thank Dr. Avila for preemptively forming the crisis transition team in response to the opening of the 2021 school year. In a meeting with San Bernardino president today, Rialto was the only one to have a committee formed already and meeting. Together, we will come up with solutions to benefit our students while keeping everyone safe and healthy according to the latest data and health information available. I look forward to continued collaboration. Please continue to stay safe and healthy. Thank you for your time. Respectfully, Lisa Lindberg, President, REA."
Okay. We move on to California School Employees Association, CSEA. Are there any comments?
We have no comments.
Communication Workers of America, CWA, do they have comments?
We have no comments.
And Rialto School Managers Association, RSMA?
We do, we have comments. Yes, yes, they do. Ramona Rodriguez, RSMA president. And it reads, "Good evening. On behalf of the Rialto School Managers Association, we would like to show love and appreciation to all teachers across the Rialto Unified School District during Teacher Appreciation Week. Teachers are the first responders in education. RSMA is filled with gratitude for your responsiveness and adaptability during these very challenging times. The Rialto School Managers Association would also like to take this time to salute all of our principals and assistant principals. Last Friday was National Principals Day, and RSMA thanked each of them for leading through service. Through your leadership, you motivate, encourage, nurture, support, and guide those around you. In these challenging times, you have continued to move courageously in your service and have shown dedication and commitment to the Rialto USD and the community. RSMA would also like to recognize our school nurses. Today is National School Nurse Day. RSMA thanks you for watching over our students and keeping them healthy. Everyone, please stay safe, stay healthy and safe. We are all in this together. Respectfully, Ramona Isela Rodriguez, RSMA president, along with the rest of the Rialto School Managers Association Board."
Okay. Now we move on to comments from the superintendent.
Thank you, President O'Kelly, and today I too want to thank all of our teachers during their Teacher Appreciation Week for all that they have done, are doing, and will continue to do to provide our students with a meaningful learning experiences, meaningful learning experiences during these challenging and very different and unique times that we're living. Thank you for everything, and in advance, I also want to thank our classified personnel, our classified staff, as next week is Classified Employees Week, for everything that they have done and continue to do to make our support of students and families and each other the great experience that it has been. With that, I would also encourage families, encourage staff as we continue to finish out the school year, if there are any situations that you need assistance with that are difficult for you, please be sure to communicate them to the proper person or myself so that I can be able to assist you with whatever challenge or concern you are having. Outside of that, please know that we are in the throes of planning for the opening of the school year. There's a lot that needs to be decided over the next month or so in order to bring us back into a safe and, but different learning situation for students and for staff here in our district. We are not going to start the year with 100% of students or staff on our campuses. It's going to look very different. It needs to be different. We cannot return to normal. We must take advantage of, unfortunately, this crisis that is before us to come up with new, exciting, and innovative ways to deliver instruction to kids and to be able to perform our jobs, duties, and responsibilities in a way that is still impactful, but they may be different. So I encourage, please know that we are encouraged by the team that we have assembled that will put together some proposals and make some final recommendations to the facilities, the instruction, and the operations of the school and the district. So we will keep you posted as members of the public, as decisions will be made so that you can have an idea of what the district or each school will look like come the opening of the school year. That is all I have.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Avila. Now we hear from members of the Board of Education. Let's start with Board Member, Mr. Ayala.
Thank you, President O'Kelly. Again, I just want to share with our community how proud I am to be part of the board that recognizes the staff and the many volunteers, the people who go out of their way, make a difference for the detriment of our, the education and the safety of our children. They're doing a tremendous job to keep moving us forward. I want to state the example in Sweden where they didn't take it very serious and they didn't have all the regulations. And as a result, you know, a lot of their community members, citizens, have been suffering in excess where, you know, those who goes to erring caution have benefited, and I'm proud to say that Rialto is one of those communities who has chose to be a little more cautious. And I'm proud, I'm glad that we have staff on board who've chosen that direction. And, you know, to ease the reins too soon without knowing for sure that this is the right thing to do, I think would be moving in the wrong direction. But we will continue to find ways, get through this together, and make one person's life as important as the mass. I thank you, President O'Kelly.
Well said, Mr. Ayala. Thank you. Okay, Board Member, Mr. Montes.
Thank you, Board President, Mr. Montes O'Kelly. Well, I just would like to welcome everybody here tonight who's decided to tune in. I want to piggyback a little bit on what Mr. Ayala just said not too long ago. We want to make sure that everybody's lives or lives are as valued as the next. And with all of the stress of the current crisis and the pandemic, many people are easily, can be easily swayed to believe that everything is okay, that nothing is wrong, and that everything should go back to normal immediately, but we want to continue to be want to continue to take precautions, want to continue to be, take pre- reactive, proactive measures. And let's not, let's not let ourselves be divided. You know, politically, our country right now seems to be very divided, friends and family. People on social media, you know, whether your people are red or blue, or their politics is red or blue, or from one party or another. People seem to be fighting right now, family members, friends, depending on their political affiliation. I just would like to encourage everyone to not let division, not let politics divide and conquer our communities, our families. There's a lot of intelligent people on both sides of the two political main parties. And in all the other parties, there's a lot of good-hearted people that are Democrat or Republican. Let's not allow ourselves to be dehumanized into being just a simple Democrat or a simple Republican. Let's continue to remain calm. I know it's a stressful time for everyone. I know a lot of our parents are stressed out. Myself, I'm stressed out as a parent, as a member of the community, as part of the workforce of our, of our, of our community. It's difficult. And I just want to continue to encourage everyone to remain calm. And that's not, because we don't have a family member or someone that we know that might be infected with the COVID-19, doesn't mean that we should go out and advocate into immediately going back to normal and risking putting our friends and family at, at lives in danger. So let's continue to pray for our community that this hopefully gets resolved soon. But we have to keep safety our number one priority. And superintendent and his team is doing everything that they can to come up with some ideas to make sure that we congratulate our seniors and then, and even our middle school students who are promoting to high school next year. But regardless of whatever outcome the district decides to go with, as far as ceremonies, we might not get what we want, but again, we have to remember that the state has certain regulations, certain restrictions that we have to abide by as a government agency, and, and it, you know, remember that the district is not a private entity and, and we're limited to what we can and cannot do. For employees, to the, to the employees of the district, thank you for all of your hard work. Last Friday, I was very happy to be a part of the small group of volunteers made up of the superintendent and the board members last Friday at Rialto Middle School to hand out meals course with gloves and masks on and all of the proper protective gear. But it's a lot of hard work, and until you go out there and help pass out those meals, you really don't understand how, how much work and how much dedication, not only the nutrition service and staff, but the security staff and all of the other people who take part in that daily work to provide those meals for our community, how much work it is. Thank you, thank you superintendent, all the board members that were able to go, which is all of us. And just a big shout out again to Fawcett and all her team. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Montes. Okay, Mr. Martinez, board clerk.
Thank you, President O'Kelly. I was just looking to see whether the numbers-
the numbers are, uh, looking any better, and they are not, but they are slowing. The COVID-19 numbers, there are, uh, a hundred and twenty-two cases confirmed in Rialto. Um, between age twenty and seventy, those are the most, um, exposed. Those below nineteen are very few, and this is county-wide. So, that, that looks good. It, it seems like parents are keeping the young ones, you know, at home, and that, that's a good thing, 'cause it shows in the numbers. Um, confirmed cases within San Bernardino County, two thousand four hundred and thirty-two. Total patients tested, twenty-six thousand and six. And total deaths county-wide, a hundred and four. Still too many, but, um, the number of days it takes to double, um, have remained at eleven point seven for about three or four days now. Prior to that, it was eight, and prior to that, it was seven. So, as the testing gets done, um, and the numbers come back, people are being found to have it. So, be careful amongst family, amongst friends. You go out, wear a mask. Um, it, it's essential that we, we follow the government, the governor's lead, and I agree, it, it is not time to be red or, or blue. And this is what I love about this position, being able to serve my community as the other Board Members do. Without a political alliance in this seat, we are not allowed to have a political alliance other than we are all Rialtonians, I guess would be the, the term. Um, I thank everybody on the Board, everybody, uh, on the staff, family, um, the ladies in Nutrition Services, the bus drivers that spend their weeks, the SCA weeks coming, teachers, um, nurses, thank you. And I know you're all doing your best. Um, the one thing that I was concerned about was the product you use on your computer, Zoom instead of WebEx or GoToMeeting. There were, um, problems with Zoom in the past. I double-checked, I heard from our, um, firewall and network people. Um, and the one thing that we can do when we have a meeting is make sure if you want it to be a secure meeting, which is required by FERPA and comp, all the students' information cannot be available in an open meeting. You can't discuss it. So, the one thing they did say is along with your meeting ID, you require a password. That way, nobody, you're less likely to get hacked. Okay, everybody, uh, stay safe. Um, kudos to every staff, uh, family member, and, uh, for all the support the, the Rialto and the county are giving us. Thank you. We appreciate you all. Uh, back to you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Board Clerk, Ms. Walker.
Board Vice President, you just, you just demoted me really quickly. What that comes in.
I don't know where that came from, Dina. I'm sorry. I apologize.
Just good evening, everyone, and I just want to say thank you to, again, all of our, uh, employees for the district and our parents and volunteers that have been, you know, working really hard and supporting us through this time. Uh, I just want to say thank you for the opportunity to come out and serve you, um, our parents and students this past week with helping to give out food. And I, I was talking to my kids about being, you know, what it means to be an essential worker, and, um, that day I was able to see really what it means to be an essential worker, because how many people actually came in to get the, um, the lunches and the breakfasts, um, that day, and how important it is that we're providing that service. Um, so thank you for that opportunity to be of service, be law, and again, stay safe, stay healthy. It's, uh, we don't know when this is gonna end, so let's all just be patient, patient, and bring the best ideas forward to, to get through this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. Okay, and now, now we're down to me, and I first of all want to say happy, happy week and day and whatever so many groups. This is a busy time of year. First of all, Happy Teacher Appreciation Week. This used to be one of my favorite weeks when I was a principal. Finding out ways to spoil our teachers and give them something they typically didn't usually get. It wa, it was wonderful. And then we also had Happy National School Nurses' Day. And where would we be without our school nurses? I tell you what, the nurse's office at any school, especially the secondary, the middle schools and high schools, is the busiest office in the place because of all the different things they have to deal with and the kids that uh, need their attention. And lastly, but not leastly, I want to say Happy Classified Employees' Week to all our amazing classified employees, uh, next week. I hope you have a wonderful week and know how much we honor you. We love and deeply appreciate all of you, all, all of these groups, all of our staff, um, and it, it just, it's unreal how much you give, and we appreciate it very much. Just want to add, uh, the Board and Dr. Avila went to Rialto Middle School last Friday to join our Nutrition Services people, uh, in the Grab and Go, I think that's what they call it, the Grab and Go lunches. And what, uh, they had that organized down to a T, and you, the whole two hours that they are handing out these lunches, they do not stop. So, we did not stop because it was a very, very busy place. It ma, fills my heart with love that we were doing this. So, I, I am so proud to be part of this district with all we do for our community. And, um, other than that, I just want everybody to have a very safe and happy couple weeks till we have our next meeting. Um, please stay safe. It is important. None of us like it. I swear that March and April were the longest months in history because, you know, after a while, it's like, okay, what do I do now? So, anyway, um, stay safe, because we, we love you and we need you all. Okay, moving on. Next item on the agenda is public hearing, and there are none. And, uh, after that, the consent calendar items. All items on the consent calendar will be acted upon in one motion unless pulled by Board of Education members or the Superintendent for individual action. Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved, Montez.
Do I have a second?
Walker, second.
Okay. Now, does anyone have any polls? And on the consent calendar?
No.
Okay, then vote by Board Members to approve the consent calendar. Uh, Nancy?
Aye.
Dina?
Aye.
Joe Martinez?
Aye.
Joe Ayala?
Aye.
Edgar Montez?
Aye.
Okay, good. Uh, we're moving on to discussion action items. Uh, the first item is Award Bid Number Nineteen Dash Twenty Dash Zero One Four for the addition of three modular classrooms at Casey Elementary School for the full-day kindergarten program. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Okay, uh, is there any discussion?
No.
No? Okay, all right. Vote by Board Members. Nancy, aye. Dina?
Aye.
Joe Martinez?
Aye.
Joe Ayala?
Aye.
Edgar Montez?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, F2, Resolution Number Nineteen Dash Twenty Dash Fifty Two, Dispending and Modifying High School Graduation Requirements for Seniors Scheduled to Graduate in June 2020. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved, Montez.
Is there a second?
Martinez, second.
Okay. It says, Adopt Resolution Number Nineteen Dash Twenty Dash Fifty Two, Dispending and Modifying High School Graduation Requirements for Seniors Scheduled to Graduate in June 2020. Is there any discussion on this item?
No.
All right, then vote by Board Members. Nancy, aye. Dina?
Aye.
Joe Martinez?
Aye.
Joe Ayala?
Aye.
Edgar Montez?
Aye.
All right, now, for F3, I have something I have to read before we, uh, vote on it. We now come to item F3 on the agenda. Government Code Section Five Four Nine Five Three was amended effective January first, two thousand seventeen to require the governing board, prior to taking final action on an employment agreement, to orally report a summary, summary of a recommendation for the salaries, salary schedules, or compensation paid in form of fringe benefits for local agency executives. The lead strategic agent, strategic congruence and social justice as a local agency executive and a proposed contract for employment is before us this evening. The proposed contract specifies that effective July first, twenty twenty, the lead strategic agent of stra, strategic congruence and social justice's base salary shall be two hundred four thousand eight hundred sixty-seven dollars and zero cents per year for twelve months of service, plus a car allowance of five hundred dollars per month, and that the lead strategic agent of strategic congruence, social justice shall be entitled to twenty-three days of annual vacation with pay, vacation accrual ceases, ceases beyond forty days of accrued unused vacation. Does anybody have any discussion on this item? No, I guess not. Do I have? Do I have a motion to approve?
Martinez?
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right. Vote by Board Members. Getting an echo on my phone. All right. Vote by Board Members. Uh, Dina?
Aye.
Joe Martinez?
Aye.
Joe Ayala?
Aye.
Edgar Montez?
Yeah, I, I just would like to say that, um, uh, I hope nobody takes this personal, but I vote aye.
Okay. And, uh, me, uh, Nancy, aye. Okay, so all ayes. All right. Next item is, approve the recommendations of the Administrative Hearing Panel. Uh, motion to approve?
Walker, so moved?
Okay, second? All right. Vote by Board Members. Uh, Nancy, aye. Dina?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Martinez? Joe Ayala? And Edgar Montez?
Ayala, aye.
Okay. And Edgar?
Aye.
All right. Adjournment. The next regular meeting of the Board of Education of the Rialto Unified School District will be held on May twentieth, twenty twenty, at seven o'clock PM telephonically and via streamlined audio only. Materials distributed or presented to the Board of Education at the Board meeting are available upon request from the Superintendent's Office.
And President O'Kelly? President O'Kelly, if I may?
Yeah?
Just quickly, before we take action to adjourn for the meeting, I just want to wish uh, you, uh, Ms. Walker and every other mother in our district a Happy Mother's Day this coming weekend.
Thank you, Dr. Avila, and the same to your wife.
Thank you.
Okay. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved, Walker?
All right, second?
Second, Montez.
And vote by Board Members. Nancy, aye. Dina?
Aye.
Aye. Joe Martinez?
Aye.
Joe Ayala?
Aye.
Edgar Montez?
Aye, aye, aye.
Hey, everyone, continue to stay safe and, um, a good evening.
Okay, we are adjourned at seven forty-eight PM.